I would like to call the regular scheduled county council meeting to order for Winsboro, South Carolina, Monday, April the 8th, 2024, at 6:00 PM. If everyone would please stand for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag. Thank you. Next, we are down to the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? See a nun, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect six zero. And for the record, I received a call from Ms. Swerigen that she is out of town at a at a meeting, so she will not be present tonight. Next, we are down to the invocation, Pastor William Rice of Seek Well Baptist Church. If you will come forward, please.
Our gracious mother, Father, our Lord, and our God. God, we want to give you thanks, give you praise, and give you glory. God, we thank you, Lord God, for this board, the councilmen, and men and women, Lord God, have come together to discuss the business of the county of Winsboro, Fairfield County. Lord God, we ask, Lord God, that your Holy Spirit will move in their hearts and their minds and their spirits, Lord God, that we come upon a unity and in peace, that we do things that to betterment our communities. Lord God, we ask, Lord God, that we be governed by you. Lord God, we ask, Lord God, that you will be with the people, Lord God, as we work together, Lord God, to improve one another. Lord God, we ask that you abide in us together, Lord God, in your spirit. Lord, keep us, Lord God, in the precious name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Pastor Rice, thank you so much. Next, we are down to approval of minutes for the regular meeting, March 25th, 2024. So it's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? See a nun, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect six zero on the approval of minutes, March 25th, 2024. Next, we are down to public presentation, there's none. First public comment session, Dr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of council, John Jones.
John Jones, District Four. Like to bring the attention to the people that are out watching on Facebook. Come in here, fill these chairs. This is your government, all right? You need to come in here and see what they're doing, and let them know how you feel about how they're doing it. All right, now, for me, none of the ordinances really brought, you know, came into my attention as much as this resolution. The resolution affirming the Fairfield County's commitment to fair housing, that's a gimme. I mean, in accordance to the federal government. So the reason that we're reaffirming it doesn't make any sense. It's the law. And then if you go down the list, whereas, 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 I hate legalese, I really do, Fairfield County Council commemorates, Fairfield County Council recognizes, Fairfield County Council desires, every single one of them, Fairfield County Council, okay. Why is not my councilman's name on the bottom of this document? It doesn't matter if it has teeth in it or not. What matters to me is there's only one signature on here. My councilman was voted in because we wanted him in that chair, and we wanted him representing us, and he is not on this document. Like I say, it doesn't matter if it has teeth in it or not, there's only one signature. That's not right, and those of you whose signatures is not on here, you need to be screaming. Thank you.
I'm confused as to what I'm speaking to. Is this the public hearing section for the A and B? This is public comment for the other items on the agenda. Okay. There was one thing I wanted to speak to. Okay, the virtual, oh, do I need to state my name? Brenda Worthington. Virtual Housing Study Work Session? I'd like to be a part of that. How do I get invited to that? I've read through the comprehensive plan references to a housing study, and I am really interested, as I am in the housing industry in Fairfield County, so I'd like to be a part of that planning. Thank you.
Morris Worthington.
Good evening, Anne Correio, District Two. I'd like to address item nine pertaining to sections A and C, also including item fourteen. In regards to the comprehensive plan, I had spoken at the last meeting about the issue of infrastructure focusing on sewer and water. In my research, along with fellow constituents of District Two, we have the following understanding. The treatment plant in Winsboro can handle 1.6 million gallons per day, currently handling 1.1 million. This only leaves 500,000 additional treatment available. This means the sewage treatment plan is at 68.75% capacity. The concern is at 80%, it is required that additional capacity be made available, taking four to five years to develop at the tune of approximately $40 million. With growth in our future due to recent property purchases by investors and new residents, additional lines are a necessity, and old fragile lines throughout the towns need to be revitalized. An upside to this new growth is the revenue stream created with the one-time capacity fees and grants to help alleviate the cost. At the Winsboro Town Meeting on April 2nd, the topic of annexing was discussed, and there was a first reading of ordinances 108, 109, and 110, adding 658.41 acres to the city limits. Annexation is the process of bringing property into the city limits. It is one of the primary means by which a city can grow, but if the city is not prepared first to receive increased demand, will it actually grow, or will it stagnate, waiting years for the common sense first steps to be completed? Growth is a good thing if all underlying infrastructure issues are addressed. What I just recently stated is a concern because the need for sewer treatment will expand beyond capacity, and it will be mandatory to start building a facility to handle this, costing millions. What is the action plan here? When existing lines are in desperate need of repair and updating, when new businesses and residents put a strain on availability of clean water, money will have to be spent to provide that. Yet, the ability to move the water is not there. We are kind of putting the cart before the horse under present circumstances. Let's work smart, let's work together, let's hear common sense issues, let's grow with a more comprehensive and updated plan. Not only will there be higher demand for clean water, but increased growth will also strain our law enforcement, EMS workers, and firefighters more so than they already are. Communication is facts, and communication of facts is the key. As a side note, in speaking with many residents of Fairfield County on their behalf, I was asked to commend the council for boosting the level of confidence and collaboration between themselves and the community. We are looking forward to updates in item fourteen, the county council administrator's report. Thank you, and have a nice evening.
Good evening, council. Talk about the agenda. I'd like to let you hear something I think is important, so.
Next, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Gullins. I heard that she recently held a town hall type meeting for her constituents. I encourage others to do the same. It is always important to have open dialogue. Open dialogue is necessary for inclusion and transparent governance.
Well, I agree with that. Open dialogue, an agenda. From what I understand, bylaws say that the agenda has to be voted on to be make a change. Apparently, we don't have a second public speaking time because that was changed on the agenda illegally. And your bylaws say that you all have to vote for that publicly to make a change. If I'm boring anybody or offending anybody, I apologize, but I'm just telling you the facts and the truth. First Amendment right, and a public meeting allows us to speak and tell you what we're thinking. I know you'd like us to talk about the subjects you have listed in the agenda, that's fine, but then we have to have a chance to speak about what's on our mind, what's important. Oh, my mama, sorry about that. What's important to us all is to have a safe environment, police department, fire department, EMS. I have been saying this for years. What does this fall on deaf ears? Don't we understand that the most important thing you can do as council people is to provide that service to everyone, including yourselves? Have a full service police department that can come to an emergency quickly, save lives, put out fires? Why aren't we doing that? What what possible answer can you give me to tell me why that isn't the number one priority in county? Think about that. Number one priority, getting employment, having new businesses come. Who wants to come if you haven't got a fire department or a police department? Who would come here? I came because I don't really care, but the bottom line is, I'll defend myself, I do what I got, but not everyone's in that position. And there are people who are feeble, elderly, who need help. We can't help them. Because you have not made the first priority, the most important thing you could do is provide the citizens with a fire department, EMS, and a police department. Thank you very much for listening to me. Thank you, Shirley, too.
Randy Bright, excuse me, Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District One. Our last two reported budget results were, quite frankly, a disaster. Both of those budgets came off their targets by five to six million dollars aggregate by department. Those budgets required last year an immediate three and a half million dollar add-on. We started like two weeks after we approved the budget. And yet, we are still wanting in our key services, fire, police, sheriff's department, and EMS. Houses are burning, crimes are being committed, people are getting delayed as far as EMS service. And that's one of the issues with the budget, is we don't have a vision, we don't have a priority. I haven't seen one thing put out there about a priority for our immediate budget. Priorities should start with what's important to people. And what's important to people are their lives. What's important to people are the lives of the families and friends, and their belongings and possessions. And that's where our first responders come in. A smart vision would be, let's take care of our first responder teams, sheriffs, EMS, fire department. Let's take care of them first. And we all know they're wanting badly. And then, we can take care of everything else from there. That's a starting point. But our budgets keep going up, and they keep being way off base. In fact, the last budget that was reported, the results, we lost another $2 million in the fund balance year over year. And part of that reason is, so we don't scrutinize, we don't prioritize, and we get bad results in the budget. Not only bad results in coming off in the budget, but bad results for the people. We don't follow up to the budgets. That's a real key. Twice, I've seen in meetings of late, where the current budget standing financials have been passed out to the council, questions were asked by the interim administrator, any questions on this budget? And not one question, although the budget itself is way over the board, some department's way over, some not way under, we're coming way off, we've added on to the budget, yet it's coming way off again. We've got to pay more attention to details, both in the scrutinization of the budget, the prioritization of the budget, and then follow-up to budget. A budget passed not followed up on is a budget wasted. It just falls into the lake. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Next, we are down to eight A, public hearings, and ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance number 596 to provide for the zoning reclassification from R1 Single Family Residential District to RD1 Rural Residential District for 2.39 acres owned by John Kern, the applicant, 55994 State Highway 215 South, Jenkinsville, South Carolina, 29065, tax map number 139-03-01-023-000. We will open this public hearing up at 6:17 PM. Anybody sign to speak?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Morris Worthington. Same thing. Randy Bright.
Well, you finally hit the winner. Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District One. Somebody's got to ask, so I'll ask it. Who gains from this? Who doesn't gain? Why are we doing it? And that should be in any time we put up anything. We need to know who, what, where, and why. Not against it, not for it, don't know anything about it, like to know something about it. Hopefully, you guys know something about it. Just let us know what's going on. And again, who does it benefit? Who does it harm, if anybody? What's the long and short-term impact? Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. We will close this public hearing at 6:18 PM. Next, we are down to eight B, in ordinance of adopting the comprehensive plan for Fairfield County, South Carolina, 2024-2034, and other matters related thereto. We will open this public hearing at 6:18 PM. Anybody sign to speak?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Brenda Worthington.
Brenda Worthington, District Two. Overall, I'd say the document's a good first draft, but there's a lot of faulty information that needs to be corrected and trends further analyzed, so new goals and strategies could be better developed for Fairfield County's future. The census divides, according to the comprehensive plan, the census divides Fairfield County into four sections, of which both Winsboro North and Winsboro South have declining populations. Ridgeway section, on the other hand, has an increasing population of 26.4%. Yet, page 138 of the comprehensive plan states areas with the highest development potential are located around the town of Winsboro and the town of Ridgeway. This goal statement does not analyze the data presented in the comprehensive plan and goes against Fairfield County's reality. Population age trends show declining numbers in young people less than 18 and the working age group, but 65-plus has a 56% increase. Education levels for Fairfield County's population for those with a college degree has increased by 78%. The number of households making over $100,000 has increased 238%. So what does this data mean? It's not reflected in the comprehensive plan. 79.2% of our working population residents work outside Fairfield County, while approximately 77% of the jobs in Fairfield County go to non-residents. Should our focus be and our citizens' tax revenue be spent on creating more jobs? There's a video promotion of Fairfield County by some of our company leadership bragging about life at Lake Murray and Soda City, and this is on a Fairfield County promotional website. Obviously, those business leaders had needs that made them live and play outside of Fairfield In the land use section of the document, it says on page 37, housing will be a top priority for Fairfield County. Page 137 says it's important for Fairfield County to be a partner with the local development community. But yet, it is the document exists in draft form, it has a lot of anti-development strategies. What you're doing is doubling the minimum lot size or more in a lot of the existing zoning districts. That makes probably 90% or so. May I have my husband's time?
May I have it given to you? Yes, sir, please.
So what this does is it makes a majority of our lots in R1 out of compliance. So if someone were to have a catastrophe, their home destroyed, would they have to go and get a variance in order to rebuild? They wouldn't now, but under the changed comprehensive plan, they probably would. Map 10.8 on page 152 is basically rezoning properties without the following the proper Page 155, table 10.7 is problematic. Details such as density should not be in this topical document. That should be left to the zoning ordinance and not in a future planning document. On page 38, the housing price reported is grossly wrong, misleading, and manipulative. It was reported in the comprehensive plan that the average price for housing available for purchase in July of '22 in Winsboro was $119,000. My husband and I own a real estate company, and I have access to the data and pulled that the average sold price in Fairfield County for 2022 for the entire year was $326,668. Big difference from 119,000. In electric, page 116, you forgot Duke Energy is a energy provider, and you have Fairfield Electric named Fairfield County Electric Cooperative. Again, page 136 has Duke Energy's coverage area wrong. It says that it covers the western part of the county. It's the primary coverage for the eastern part of the county or Lake Quateri, where I live. Page 123 and 124, education facilities, you don't name Midland STEM Charter School, which was founded in 2014 and is building a beautiful campus in the town of Winsboro. For water, page 110, you need to look into Mitford Rural Water District capacity. The document states that it's at 39%, but rumor is, is that it's at capacity when the new business is built on the Highway 200 interchange at I-77, and that should be a big problem, a big red flag. Forestry, according to the comprehensive plan, 86% of Fairfield County land space is forested. Is there any additional funding from state or federal for subsidizing as ag use tax revenue is dismal? revenue is dismal?
We will close this public...
Randy Kelly. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Apologize for signing the wrong sheet. I'm Randy Kelly. I live in District 2. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission, and I just want to offer a couple of comments on points that I think are worth emphasis and share with you. The first one is in the land use element, and it concerns the housing density. Ms. Worthington just recommended, just commented on that a moment ago, and I just wanted to, I guess in a form of apology, the Planning Commission reviewed the document, and then there was some turnover with the position on the staff, the Community Development Director, and there were some changes made to the plan later on. We had one more chance to do a quick review, but with 200 pages, a lot of that density information that had been changed was just missed, and so I have to take the blame for that. We let that get through. But since that time, and I've just seen this recently, a lot of revisions have been made that I think bring that land use element, particularly the housing density part of it, to right, and I think you've been given copies of that, and so I would ask that you pay close attention when you review that, make sure that you're comfortable with it. I believe that Ms. Worthington was absolutely right in what she said, but I think those errors have been corrected now, so I feel good about the language that's in there for that part of it. The second thing I wanted to mention real quickly is in the Goal Number 10, Priority Investment, and if you look at Item 10.2, that item says facilitate an ongoing council-led strategic planning process that evaluates and prioritizes comprehensive plan and goals and on. I won't elaborate on that. But the point that we were trying to make by adding this is that we would like to see the council work out a process for planning where council members take individual ownership for high-priority items that are in the plan and manage those with a business-like, if you will, management process, where you have an owner, you have specific individuals accountable for getting work done, and you have timelines, and those priorities are recorded and reported on routinely at council meetings. I think that goes a long way from making the plan an item that just sits on the shelf and collects dust and becomes a true guideline that is meant to be and a working document for keeping the county moving forward for the future.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District 1. It's clear this Comprehensive Plan is fraught with opportunities, and first of all, I've got to wonder why we're already jumping ahead to a hearing when we really haven't smoothed out the plan itself or the draft of the plan. But some of the other issues that I have is that we're repeating many of the same mistakes that we did in the plan from 10 years ago. And of course, that plan was supposed to be 10 years, but it wound up being 13 years because we didn't address that, correcting or updating that plan until just now. And one example that's emblematic of the failure of the last plan is we're repeating the same thing in the first element, population. The last plan, 2010, set a broad-based goal of increasing the population via economic Without any success markers, without any benchmarks to manage the process throughout the 10 years, well, 13 years. So what happened? What happened is not only the entire plan was not a success, it was a failure. Emblematic of that was the population, which was our number-one goal, decreased by 12% in a state that increased population by 11%. And of course, as you know, how's economic development going? Well, we're currently in a three-year drought of economic development. Yeah, we're going to add 17 jobs sometime with a cement factory, but that's not economic development. There was a time when we used to average 1,000 every couple of years under one regime. Part of that problem is the same problem we have with the budget. We're not setting up benchmarks and markers for, throughout the plan of the 10 years, and hopefully not 13. It's like driving, going on a journey in a car, not having any gauges, keeping your windshield covered with the windscreen up. We don't know where we're going, how we're getting there, and why. We have plenty of benchmarks available that can tell us success. Housing, it might be, number of housing starts this year. Population is easy to measure. Crime, response time for EMS, all those are easy to measure, but we're not putting any standards in place to shoot for. And if we don't shoot for them, we're not going to follow up for them. And if we don't follow up, we're going to end up nowhere like we did with this last 10-year plan, just spinning our wheels because we never knew where we were. Thank you. We will close this public hearing at 6:32 PM. Next, we are down to Item 9, Ordinances, Resolutions, and Orders. Item A, Second Reading, Ordinance Number 833, An Ordinance of Adopting the Comprehensive Plan for Fairfield County, South Carolina, 2024-2034, and Other Matters Related There Too.
Mr. Chair, in light of what we've heard tonight, and even though I think Mr. Kelly said much of this has been corrected, I would like to make a motion, if appropriate, to table this until we can look at the recommendations and suggestions and make any needed changes before we bring this for second reading.
There's a motion to table it until we can look at the Comprehensive Plan and see if any revisions need to be made based on light of the information that was provided tonight. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to table the Comprehensive Plan. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Mr. Chair, just questioning, are we tabling to the next meeting or to when?
Mr. Keen and Ms. Williams, do you think the next meeting will give us enough time to get this revisited?
Unless the county attorney corrects me, when the motion to table is passed, it has to come back to the next meeting. You can retable it, but it has to come back for your consideration to the next meeting.
All right. So everybody in favor of tabling the Comprehensive Plan?
Aye.
All opposed? Let the record reflect on Item 9A, Second Reading, Ordinance 833, to table 60, to table the Comprehensive Plan. Mr. Morgan, do I need to go back to? I don't need to go back to that one for another. Just let it go as that, right?
Yes, sir. At this moment, it's been tabled until the next meeting.
All right. Thank you. 9B, Second Reading, Ordinance Number 832, An Ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance Number 596 to provide for the zoning reclassification from R1 Single Family Residential District to RD1 Rural Residential District for 2.39 acres owned by John Kern, applicant 5994, State Highway 215 South Jenkinsville, South Carolina, 29065, tax map number 139-03-01-023-000.
Mr. Chair, can we get an explanation for the citizens so everybody's aware of what this is about?
Mr. Morgan?
Yes, Mr. Chair. In order for, there can be discussion, but it's going to need to be properly motioned and seconded, and then it can be brought out and information can be presented to council at that time.
Motion to approve. Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Now, is there any discussion? Mr. Morgan, Mr. Reeves got a request. If you can explain it, please.
Yes, sir. I think I'm actually going to defer to Mr. Keen as it relates to this particular matter. If there's any legal questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of council, the applicant in this case is wanting to build a larger storage facility or secondary building on his property than the current zoning will allow, so that's the reason for his request to change.
Thank you. I was aware of that. I just wanted everybody to understand what this is about. Thanks.
Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Let the record reflect, 51, on the second reading of Ordinance 832. Excuse me. Item C, Resolution Number 2024-02, A Resolution Affirming Fairfield County's Commitment to Fair Housing.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect, 60, 9C, Resolution Number 2024-02. Item 10, Board and Commission Minutes, there is none. 11 Board and Commission Appointments, there is none. O Business, none. N New Business, none. 14 County Administrators Report, Item A, The Budget Work Session.
Mr. Chairman, just a reminder, your first budget work session is this Wednesday, and we have two more scheduled the following Wednesdays if we need them. Their schedule started at 3:30.
3:30.
3:30. And go until we run out of stuff to talk about.
Item B, do you have something, Mr. Reeves?
Yeah. Okay. This Wednesday at 6 o'clock is an annual new members reception at Farms Ridgeway at 6 o'clock, which I already RSVP'd to go to, and so, but I'll come, and I may, I'll leave in time to go to that probably, but that's all. Thank you.
I think we might give you the permission to leave and go. Next, we are down to Virtual Housing Study Work Session.
Mr. Chairman, this is the item Ms. Worthington referenced. This is scheduled for Thursday at 2 PM. The invitation is actually on our Facebook page. It's on our webpage, but it's on our Facebook page, so if you have any trouble finding it or have trouble getting to a color office, and we'll get the information to you.
Mr. Keen, that meeting is here?
It's virtual.
Virtual, okay.
It's a Teams meeting.
I got you. Wanted to make sure. Next, we are down to Standing Committee Meetings.
Mr. Chairman, just a reminder, we have two committees scheduled for next Monday. Economic Development is scheduled at 4, and Public Services and Development would normally be scheduled at 6, but we do not have a Public Affairs and Policy Committee in between, so we were wondering if maybe Public Services wanted to move up to 5 and put them back
Can I get back with you on that?
Sure. They're scheduled for next Monday, just a reminder.
Okay. Thank you.
Ready to move forward? I'm sorry.
Sorry, my, I'm sorry. Next, we are down to Item D, CDBG Intergovernmental Agreement for the Town of Winsborough.
Yes, sir. There's a briefing document in your package. The Town of Winsborough is applying for a community development block grant to upgrade water lines in the Winsborough Mills area. The reason that we're involved in this is that the improvement area or the grant area is outside the city limits. It's in the county, and the Department of Commerce requires an intergovernmental agreement between the organizations. Winsborough will be the applicant. Winsborough will administer it through a contract with Central Midlands Council of Governments. All we're doing is asking you to approve the intergovernmental agreement that allows them to apply for funding to be used out in the county, and that's what this document
Would you, maybe not, but would you happen to know exactly what area, what roads?
Yes, sir. Let me see if I can look at the map real quick. It's along Maple Street, 10th, 11th. Can't read that one, I'm sorry. Chestnut, is that Chestnut?
That's probably Chestnut.
Yeah, Chestnut, just south of town near Drody Park.
Okay.
Yep.
Counsel, this is an action item?
Oh, and by the way, there is no match required by us, no financial match by us.
Okay.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved and properly seconded to approve the CBG Intergovernmental Agreement for the Town of Winsborough. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect, 60, on approving that action item. Item E, Maggie Harris Bridge Replacement Contract, this is an action item as well. Mr. Keen?
Mr. Chairman, on December the 12th of last year, you solicited bids for the replacement of the bridge on Maggie Harris Road. We did receive the bids. Davidson Floyd is the engineer on the project. They have recommended, they've reviewed all the bids, they've recommended Smith Row as the lowest and responsible bidder. The project is bid at 40906172. You had budgeted $550,000 for the bridge replacement, so funds are available. I think the briefing document mistakenly said you need a budget amendment, but you do not. You have that money available. Our recommendation is you award the contract to Smith Row for the construction of that Maggie Harris Bridge.
Second. It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion from council? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect, 60, on action item, Maggie Harris Bridge Replacement Contract. Item F, Detention Center Federal Sub-Award Agreement, and this is an action item as well. Mr. Keen?
Mr. Chairman, we've been made aware of a subaward pass-through grant essentially from the South Carolina Department of Health and Environmental Control to buy full-body scanners for certain confinement facilities in the state. They reached out to us, made us aware of it. We registered, our Detention Center Director registered for this, and it did get awarded. It's a piece of equipment that allows non-contact with scanning with the inmates for COVID or any other infections. They can also do other things with this scanner. There's an agreement in your packet with DIAC that has to have the money, they've given us a short period of time here. 30 days after the date of approval or no later than June 30th, we have to submit an invoice to the state for the payment of the money. We have to order the equipment no later than July 31st, and we have to have it in place by September the 13th. But this is a no-match grant, and as I said, they reached out to us, and it's a federal grant pass-through to the state to us for the purchase of this body scanner, and we'd recommend that you accept the grant and award the contract.
Doesn't, it also scans for contraband and other stuff.
It does. It does.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect 6-0 for the item L, Detention Center Federal Sub Award Agreement. Action item. Next, we are down to Clerk of Council's report. None. Item 16, County Council Time. Any council members wish to be heard? Ms. Green?
Yes, I'd like to respond to the fact that the comprehensive plan was tabled. I have heard from my constituents that essentially, the important part here is to make sure that all of the corrections that were suggested are made. And once those are made, that we have some way of reviewing those to make sure that, that the final document contains everything that's, that's we want. Okay, thank you.
The council members?
Mr. Roof? I had somebody recently ask me if there was a location in the county where citizens could dump broken brick, block, et cetera, and I was told none. But is that something that we need to look at or? I think I talked to Mr. Burrows, and I believe he said, "There's a place out of county." I forgot what the name of it was. Do you know?
I do not. We can check into it.
He knew what it was, but anyway, I just, I didn't know if that was something that we need to look at or, or not.
Yeah, the county, as I understand, we do not operate a construction and demolition landfill. We just have the transfer station. Sometimes you'll have private landfills that do that, but I'm, I'm not aware of one here, but we can check into it.
Mr. Robinson?
I'm just, question for Mr. Chair or administration. I'm just curious, is there anything going on with our safety, sensitive departments? I'm hearing concern in reference to them, so. Okay.
Any other council members? There's no, there's not a executive session tonight, so I entertain any other motions.
Second.
There's a motion to adjourn in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Let the record reflect 6-0 on adjournment. We are now adjourned.